It's very frustrating because it is hard to hear people and understand them.
Yeah, you have a hard time following what's going on in the meeting.
Especially if you're gonna have a long dialogue.
It won't be long, I'll be back.
A Ryan question, I don't know if we can make them do that or not. That would be, that would be a question for Ryan.
We're scheduled for the end of August.
We can ask for reasonable. Ask for reasonable time, manner, and place, so yeah, we can ask them to.
It's only gonna take a couple of weeks to get on board after that.
The following, three, participants are in the conference. A B room.
Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, Gene, it's nine thirty.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, it's July the fifteenth, and I'll ask Supervisor Ron Gold to do the invocation, and Supervisor Gary Watson to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this great nation that you've given us, and this outstanding county that you've given us to run, Lord. Give us the wisdom to run it wisely, Lord, protect our employees, and let's have an injury-free day today. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you verify our members are present on the telephone, please? Supervisor Angus?
Here.
Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Okay, thank you. I'll now entertain a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on August the fifth, twenty nineteen, at nine AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, A, three, four, and seven, to discuss items noticed in the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'll entertain a motion and action to approve, way been the reading and full of the items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, going on to the official business to come before the board. We have discussion impending for contemplative litigation claims and demands. Attorney S. Lynn, do we have anything?
Nothing to report to the board.
Thank you. We also have committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Johnson, I'll go to you first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've submitted a report of recent teleconferences with the Department of Defense Western Region Partnership. It was written by Jerry Hillier, he's our Executive Director for Quad State, along with a PowerPoint presentation. The DOD remains highly concerned over base integrity and developments near the boundaries. It also is concerned about a variety of species impacting base missions. The emphasis on two bird species as indicators in management emphasizes points to general interest in conservation and protection on public land outside of the bases. The DOD has made substantial investment in desert tortoise recovery to date, and that work continues. The current meetings appear to be a kickoff of a deep dive into management, which may carry over to BLM land adjacent to bases. I'll keep you posted as these initiatives continue. DOD also continues to have interest in land acquisition. The REPI program that is administered by the Office of the Secretary of Defense, a key component of the REP program is the use of buffer partnerships among the military service, private conservation groups, state and local governments, was authorized by Congress. Readiness and environmental protection integrity is what it stands for, and it continues to have funds to acquire private land near bases. Also, it submitted a report of the teleconference meeting of the Management Oversight Group, and that was also from Mr. Hillier. It involves the Mojave population only. The items of interest were the report that except for a small part of the range in Nevada, numbers continue to decline despite investments. Ms. Allison's report on the absence of juveniles is especially disturbing. In my opinion, it relates to the increase in predation. The priority map for tortoise-proof fencing on highways should be of interest, but so far only includes the interstate and state highways. I attended the NACO conference in Las Vegas. As a member of the ambassadors, I participated in a welcome to new and first-time attendees. We had around two hundred and eighty new folks with over three thousand attending. It can be overwhelming when you are a first-timer, and I enjoy sharing information and making connections. At the Public Land Steering Committee, Jonathan Sheffield, the Associate Legislative Director for NACO, presented updates on legislation, regulations to both meetings. PILT was fully funded this year and is targeted in the House Appropriations Bill for full funding in FY twenty twenty. Congress has adopted language for PILT that funds it at the authorized level, which is left it subject to annual appropriation, but essentially handled as mandatory funding to accommodate the inflation factor in the formula. This doesn't fully solve the PILT problem, but it's surely a step in the right direction. Secure rule schools received a two-year fix, and several members are still working on getting it funded beyond twenty twenty. Senator Wyden, he's from Oregon, is still pushing the endowment approach, but few are optimistic it could get funded. Legislation has been introduced to primarily fund PILT, that's H R thirty forty-three from Kirkpatrick. The ESA regulations, which have been pending for over a year, which will make changes in critical habitat designation, as well as separate handling of threatened and endangered species, is expected soon. The PILT fly-in will be in September the tenth through the twelfth. The NACO legislative conference will be February twenty-ninth through March fourth. The featured speakers brought in to address the public lands and also W I R, since the audience for both were essentially the same, there is no purpose in approaching the subjects chronologically. But Casey Hammond was the first, the interim Acting Director of BLM spoke in a rambling talk. He covered BLM history, its current change of focus towards users, and spoke of his privilege to be responsible for land that had been settled and used productively for generation. He made specific reference to the eastern state residents, who often believed they know better how the West should be managed. BLM is now operating on the principles of federalism. In this context, greater recognition is given to states and local government and the vision for public land. He used renewable energy for an example, indicating county input on siting decisions was important. With Sage grouse, the department has avoided listing and has deferred to the state for direct input. BLM cut back the massive mineral withdrawal, which had been proposed for Sage grouse. Recognizing mining as a spot activity and surface activity, and use can be managed and mitigated. He spoke of frustration with the wild horse and burrows. All recognize they are a costly problem, requiring more gatherings, but there are few disposable options. Sterilization on such a broad scale is not proving practical. NEPA was never intended to be a hurdle, just a vehicle to provide information for decision-makers. Sadly, the process went crazy, and page limits will force discipline and efficiency. BLM is looking at a rejected planning two-point-oh process that was killed by the CRA Congressional, that's the Congressional Review Act, but is looking at ways to continue land-use planning to better identify needed work and activity. He cited Red Rocks, a local Las Vegas area, which needs maintenance and improved visitor management. He cited the FLIPMA two-oh-two-nine C-section on planning coordination with local governments and committed to following input. Updated guidance on ACECs, those are areas of critical environmental concern, that should be issued soon. He said he was hesitant to speak about RS-two-four-seven-seven, and so he did not. I think we really need to determine the basis for his hesitancy, since we are promoting solutions with legislation, and to which BLM spoke in favor of at the Senate hearing. Cynthia Moses Need, who has been the department's liaison with NACO for the last decade, has taken a new position in the department's fire management section, and will be leaving her coordinating position. Most present who have dealt with her are sad to see her move on, a replacement will be hard. Vicky Christensen, the Chief of Forest Service, spoke forcibly regarding change direction within the agency led by strong leadership and direction from Secretary of Agriculture Purdue. The advocacy is for forests to be healthy, diverse, and productive. Her remarks essentially amplified those given at the NACO legislative conference, though affirmed them by repetition. She is committed to working with local communities and recognizes the service has a strong cultural and economic partnership with communities. Interdependence, there is a local economy or economic benefit when forest service projects and infrastructure are done correctly. She is committed to being a good neighbor, she has entered into stewardship agreements with states and local governments. These are not contracts and not one-size-fits-all, but formalized partnerships. The authority has continued in the last, it was contained in the last farm bill. The goal is to provide for improved forest management, emphasis on forest health. The service is revising rules on NEPA process and procedure for simplification, similar to what the Department of Interior is doing. She also stated that her department is five-point-two billion dollars behind in deferred maintenance. Now, this can hurt tourism down the road, that's just my thought. Casey KC is the Nevada State Forester, spoke of issues specific to Nevada, but with application throughout the West. She expressed strong support for the U.S. FS shared stewardship program. She expressed concern about fire management and was critical of the past hundred percent suppression strategies employed by the land management agencies. There needs to be a mix, in her opinion, of controlled burns and forest management, which reduces the fuels. Nevada has initiated a fire fix similar to the federal approach with projects which address forests and rangeland health. There needs to be, in her opinion, a cultural change in the approach to resource management on wildlands. In looking, uh... When they were talking about building relationships with the wild horse and burrows, they said in the last three months, they have doubled their adoptions and saved eight-hundred thousand dollars. But there's still eighty-eight thousand animals on the rangeland with only adequate feed for twenty-seven thousand. We did one platform change, it basically redid our, our purpose statement and didn't shorten anything. We had twenty-six resolutions, which I can provide if anyone is interested. Only one was of interest and got into a discussion, it was requiring the feds to share forty percent of mining revenues with the county of origin. And Nevada County wanted to change it to any affected county. They have two gold mines in neighboring counties, but all the people live in their county and require the services. I pointed out that gold is not a mineral that money is collected on, so this proposed legislation will not affect them. It was brought up that it would be impossible to decide who was affected if we didn't keep it to just the county where the mining was taking place. We discussed until the afternoon, when we finally voted to go ahead with the county of origin. Personally, I've never been able to find out what the state does with the revenues, because I can't find it in our budget. The forestry director spoke and stated that the five-point-two billion dollars that we were talking about is really gonna affect us later on down the road, and especially when you see there's all this funding for them to go out and buy more land, but not take care of the land that they have. I also attended the IT and Cyber Standing Committee. We decided to form a county collaborative platform for CIOs or IT directors, whichever name they go by, to share ideas and solutions to problems. We want to get more counties being proactive. Ransomware attacks are not going away, and more governments are being attacked. I discussed with some other, other ideas for strengthening our security and will share it with our director. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Angus, we'll go to you now. Do you have any report?
I'm still at the NACO conference in Las Vegas, I'll give my report when I return in two weeks. Well, when I, when we have our next meeting.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I attended the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District meeting this month. Majority of the conversation was their, the farmers, individual farmers' participation in the created surplus plan that allows farmers to store water back behind Hoover Dam. But that was, that was probably the biggest issue that they had talked about, and how they were gonna work that program. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you Supervisor Watson.
Thank you Chairman Bishop. I don't have a report today, but I should be able to give you a report at our next meeting on groundwater, and the committees that are put together by the state legislature. Thank you.
Great, I look forward to that report. So I also attended the, the annual NACO conference and exposition over the weekend in Clark County, Nevada. And for those of you that are not aware of what NACO is, it's a, it's a conference that draws a cross-section of elected officials and county staff from across the country. People that attend are from the rural and urban counties, large and small budgets and staff, and, and we all come together and kind of shape the NACO's federal policy agenda. We, we learn, we network, we share the best practices, all aimed to help efficiency of county government and for our residents. Personally, I participated in topics such as community economic development, opportunity zones, workforce development, a little bit on the twenty-twenty census, immigration reform challenges, and the connection between national broadband data and the federal funding. So there's a lot of information being put out there, you couldn't attend all of the classes, there were just too many, many classes, and some conflicted with, with time, so what, what NACO does do is they, they give you handouts, if you can't attend the meetings, and there's also videos that they post on their website, so, you know, in, in time, any topic that you were interested in that you weren't able to attend, you can watch the video of, of their presentations. That concludes my report, and with that, we'll go on to the call to the public. I do have, oh wait, let me go back, we, we, do we have a county manager's report?
No report, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, and I will entertain now a motion to approve the May seventeenth, twenty nineteen budget workshop, and May twentieth, twenty nineteen, regular Board of Supervisors minutes for approval.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we go on to the call to the public, kind of jumped the gun there. We have one person that's signed up to speak, this person is anonymous, so will the anonymous person step forward?
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, I looked it up, Arizona law does require that we have the name of the person for the minutes, the minutes are required for that.
I can't hear you.
Sir, we, we need your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm an anonymous audience member.
Okay, the.
I've got some very controversial stuff here, and I'd rather not have my name Scotty put in the paper.
The county attorney has told us that we do need a name for the record.
Scotty, I just said that.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hildy, I want you to know that this, where's the camera? Yeah. I know you're watching at home there in Bullhead. This was such a farce. This thing they had Friday over in Laughlin. This dog pound thing you got going on here, why should anybody in Laughlin, Bullhead pay for any more dog pound, animal shelter you guys call it? We pay for our own, why can't, I think, what Havasu down there pays for their own, why can't Kingman pay for their own? Now, this is the third time I've been up here, the thing I really wanted to gripe about is the channel guide to our off-air channels. I came up here, and I'm not gonna say her name, but I talked to one of your people. I wanna know why I couldn't get a channel guide, and the addresses of channels five, seven, ten, twelve, and fifteen. Why can't I get their phone numbers and addresses? I don't have one of those stupid phones. I'm computer illiterate, so I can't look them up at the library, and the library, they, they don't like helping you. I wanted to gripe about channel ten, and they were having Repal on, he shouldn't be on in the daytime, he was only on there for two weeks. He was taking the place of, of TMZ that just declared Lake Havasu the new KKK capital of the world. Guess you heard about that, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday they said that. That must be nice, 'cause Kingman's had a little problems with the Muslim problem. But yeah. Why can't I get, I wanna know why the, the prices are different in Kingman, in Bullhead, and like Meadview and stuff, they don't get many channels out there. But are we paying the same price as Kingman? They get twice as many channels as we do. I know it's not much, but we should be able to get the same channels. I know it's another antenna bouncing to Oatman, and it does cost money. But anyway, I couldn't get, oh, and then one of you guys phones me up the next day. I guess she got the wrong information, she said that they were gonna phone me. I thought channel five, seven, ten, twelve, and fifteen were gonna phone me. No, it was one of their guys saying, what's the matter with your TV signal and stuff? And I got livid and cussed him out, and hung up on him. So, I mean, you need to get things straight upstairs. I'm not paying much for it, but I, this is the third time I had to come over here, you guys didn't work last week, apparently, I didn't know that. I thought you met every week, so that was my fault.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scotty. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this board during the call to the public? Seeing none, I would, will now close the call to the public, and we'll go on to our presentations. This morning, we're honored to have Ms. Penny Pugh, she's the District Director and Intergovernmental Affairs Office of Congressman Paul Gosar. She'll be presenting congressional recognition this morning. Ms. Penny?
Good morning Chairman Bishop, supervisors, staff, members of the public. It's my honor to be here on behalf of Congressman Gosar. I do want to let everyone know that Pat Farrell's wife, Casey, called this morning, and Pat is on the pour-in this morning and not able to join us, so we will reschedule his presentation for a future board meeting. But at this time, I'd like to call Sheriff Schuster over, as well as... Each year Congressman Gosar honors law, law enforcement, both sheriff deputies, as well as the town and city police officers throughout our district, which is seven counties, and so you can imagine there are a lot of, lot of fantastic law enforcement. We want the community to know the impact and the importance that they are in our communities. At this time, I'd like Sheriff Schuster to, to read the statement that was sent and submitted to us, and then I'll do the presentation afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning Sheriff.
Good morning Board. Detective Brennan Cassidy has been with the Mojave County Sheriff's Office since two thousand and ten. He started his career with the Sheriff's Office as a detention officer and became a deputy in two thousand and twelve. Brennan was transferred to detectives, where he's currently the Sheriff's Office Computer Forensics Examiner. Detective Cassidy went to training associated with the Arizona Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force in two thousand and eighteen for targeting online ads. Over the course of the last eight months, Detective Cassidy has successfully charged thirteen individuals with leering minors for sexual exploitation and attempted sexual conduct with minors related to these online ads. These proactive law enforcement details have successfully identified online predators in our area, keeping the youth of Mojave County safe. Several of these individuals have already pled guilty to these charges, with one offender being sentenced to thirty-one years in prison for his crimes. As sheriff, I'm extremely proud of Deputy Cassidy, I'm extremely pleased with our entire detective division. As you know, they are, they have limited resources, but they always seem to get the job done, and this is spectacular work. The fact that we put away thirteen sexual predators over the last eight months is stellar work. Deputy Cassidy deserves this award, and I'm thankful to Penny for coming down, and of course Congressman Gosar for offering up this award. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to read, this law enforcement appreciation is hereby awarded to Detective Brennan Cassidy, Mojave County Sheriff's Office, for outstanding service and lasting contribution to the county and surrounding communities. Okay, he's gonna pass on making some comments, so again, thank you so much for allowing us to be up here.
Thank you Board.
Thank you Sheriff Schuster, Penny Pugh, and Deputy Cassidy, that's, that's amazing, and I'm honored to be part of this ceremony. Okay, we'll now go on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items, unless a board member saw requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda on a separate discussion and action. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to pull from the agenda?
Nothing today, Madam Chair.
Okay Supervisor Angus?
Nothing today.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Items twenty-four and twenty-five.
Supervisor Watson?
None this morning, thank you Chairman.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items twenty-four and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes unanimously, and we'll now take up item number twenty-four. Approve Mojave County's warrant register for June twenty nineteen in the amount of eight million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. I saw an expenditure for ant farm construction. Are we building an ant farm that I don't know about?
I do not believe so. The amount, three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, I will check into it and follow up, let you know what that is.
Thank you ma'am.
Actually, I have an answer for you. Ant farm construction is a private firm, it is a contracting company.
Do they build ant farms Supervisor Watson?
I'm unaware of any ant farms that they've built, but they do entertain that name.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you ma'am.
Did you wanna make a motion?
Sure, I move that item twenty-four be adopted.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimously, going on to item number twenty-five. Authorize the Public Works Director to retain an Arizona State Museum Certified Consultant to perform a cultural resource survey as required by A S L D and State Historical Preservation Office. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Lotosky, I just wanted to know what the project is pertaining, more so than, I understand the cultural investigation that we need to do on state land, but I was concerned, what, what is the project?
Yes, Supervisor Gould, members of the board, this project has a nexus to the construction of the Roundabout in Golden Shores, the Roundabout that was administered, both design and construction, at a federal funding, hundred percent federal funding of approximately two million dollars by the Arizona Department of Transportation. Subsequent to that project construction, we discovered a particularly potential, I should say, a particularly strong storm that materialized after project construction in April of twenty seventeen, caused some undue flooding in the vicinity of the project, and caused some undue flooding in the vicinity of the project, and we traced that back to the sizing of a retention basin that was part of the project design and construction. And in collaborating with ADAT, it was deemed that the off-site drainage could be improved, and such improvement did require obtaining some additional right-of-way across state lands, which is south of Powell Lake Road in Golden Shores. As a result, staff has worked vigorously with state lands in acquiring this additional right-of-way. However, in the process of their stakeholder outreach, the State Historic Department has rendered this requirement of a cultural study, which, upon concurrence by the board, the fund would take approximately four weeks or so.
Yeah. I had met with the owner of the hardware store that gets flooded out that's right next to that roundabout, so I'm sure he'll be pleased to know that we're going to take some action and hopefully alleviate that flooding.
Absolutely, and we've been steadfast in our efforts to remedy these off-site drainage deficiencies since the initial event occurred. Again, the project being an ADAT managed design and by consultants, design project and constructed project, we were kind of on the periphery as owner of the project. But credit to our partners at the Northwest District, ADAT, that we've been successful in gaining this important development with state lands to go forward.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move that item 25 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll now go to our public hearings this morning. Item number 34, I'll open the public hearing. Setting as the Board of Directors for the Horizon Six Improvement District, this will be a discussion of possible action regarding approving the adoption of the Horizon Six Improvement District Policy Procedure Number 2019-01. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Mary Van Roy? If you could give your name and address for the record?
Okay, thank you, Chair, Bishop, and Board and Staff. I'm Mary Van Roy, 4034 Blue Canyon Road, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. And I am here to support allowing the outside district area to get the water meters in for the $2200 fee, which I'm assuming they came up with that figure for a good reason. Back when we did the Blacktop, I have a map because our newspaper actually printed a story that it was 2200 for every property owner that's in Horizon Six, but they made the correction, and it's only the outside district. So, this is just an old map from when we were getting the permission for the Blacktop on the perimeter, and Red Rock is all state trust land, so we actually just had to buy a piece for the shoulder. And then Littlefinger's a city, and Lakeview's a city, so we're back to Window Rock is the only road that borders on private property. And those people who have that property, I'm sure they'd be very pleased to get water through our water district. So, it seems very reasonable, and I think that's a very good thing to do, and that their sharing in the cost to help support and maintain the water district would be wonderful. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your support. Anybody have any questions to the speaker? Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this item? So, I'll close the public hearing. Does anyone want to hear from Director Lotosky? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Buster.
Most approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Supervisor Watson. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gold?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, going on to item number 35 on our agenda, I'll open the public hearing. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the adoption of the proposed fee schedule for providing commercial data requests, custom maps, return check fee, and priority fee requests for partial splits, combines to the assessor's office as submitted. I have no one that signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
The assessor might want to speak.
See, we have our assessor coming to the podium.
Morning, Board. Miss Kentsch, happy Monday. I'm just here to answer some questions. If you had any questions in regards to the documentation you got, we're just looking to conform with the other counties of the state, trying to be more uniform in our charges. One of them was a rush fee, too. We didn't have that in there, so we needed to put that in for, you know, buildings go in really well, and some people need their splits and combines done quickly. So, if there's any questions, you had it all.
Does anyone have any questions for our assessor?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
Assessor Kentsch, is there... Do you have a way to prevent... So, when you have a rush fee, sometimes there's a concern that the people that don't pay the rush fee won't get their work done in a timely manner. Do you have a way to make sure that that happens?
No, because it depends on...
That they get their work done in a timely manner?
Yes, every job's different. So, every job's going to take maybe a little longer, not as much time. Some are easy, some have no title problems. So, every job's different. We have a process that it goes through cartography, and then it goes to our special services. And some people just need it a lot faster to get a title, to get a loan. So, we're willing to work with them, but we have to put them in front of everyone else. So, there's going to be a rush fee for that. But we have... Because everything's different, it's not like we can say that it's going to take this much time, as well as the fact, three years ago, it was a lot faster. We didn't have so much coming through.
Sure. I just wanted to share my concern that I didn't want people to not receive their things in a timely manner if they did not pay the rush fee.
I understand.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Board. Thank you, Miss Kentsch.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that item 35 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and do a roll call on that.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gold?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll now go on to the regular agenda. Item number 36. Setting as the Board of Directors for the Horizon Six Improvement District. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the adoption of Horizon Six District Resolution Number 2019-01, and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the Board. We do have one person that signed up to speak on this, Mary Van Roy. Would you like to speak again?
Yes, Chair, Bishop, and Board and Staff. Again, I'm a resident of Horizon Six Improvement District, and yes, I do support the water agreement with the city, and the city council already approved it, so with a county approving it, then it's a go for the next five years, and I don't think we have any other option but to say yes to that. So, tomorrow night, we actually have a meeting at 5:00 at the library to talk about our water rates and that sort of thing. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Yeah, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the Board? Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Most approve.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call with this one as well.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Johnson? Yes.
Supervisor Gold?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 37. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, pursuant to ARS 48-803B, elect a qualified interim elector to fill the vacant seat on the Fort Mojave Mesa Fire District Board. Supervisor Gold, this is in your area.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ryan, can you explain the process, why this happens in the general process?
Sure. So, when there's a vacancy in the fire district, by law, the fire district has the first opportunity to appoint the vacant seat, and they have 90 days to do it. So, the vacancy occurs, they have 90 days to fill it, and then if the fire district is unable to fill it for whatever reason, it then comes upon the Board of Supervisors to fill the vacancy. In this particular instance, there was a vacancy. It went 90 days. The fire district was unable to fill it, and so then it came over to the supervisors. Now, we're in the process where the supervisors have solicited comment, they solicited applications, and I believe we have some applications here. Now, it's for the Board to decide, and really, it's any way the Board wishes to decide how you want to pick that vacancy, I would just say it's got to be done by a majority vote. So, whatever you want to do in terms of if you want to propose someone, if you say, "Yep, I want this person," or if you want to debate about it, whatever you want to do, ultimately, it has to be a majority vote of the Board. But if you have somebody in mind that you like, I'd recommend that you would suggest that person, or if you want to give both names out there and you guys debate it however way you want to go about doing it. I think we tend to defer to the district, the supervisor in which district it is. So, this is Supervisor Gold's district, so we tend to defer to that supervisor, but it's completely up to the Board how you wish to pick that person.
Supervisor Gold, it's...
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Roll back up here. I'm assuming that you've ever had the applications. Let's see.
I believe there was two applications?
There's two, and I don't know, do we read their names or...
Yeah, whichever one. In your motion, you say, "I move to appoint the name of the person to fill the vacancy."
"I move to appoint Arden Locksman, a qualified interim elector to fill the vacant seat on the Fort Mojave Mesa Fire District Board," from the applicant submitted, who submitted an application to the clerk of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 38. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-082.
Thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you. I bring this to our Board this morning for the approval in support of both the Senate and House bills for the Wallopah tribal water rights settlement, which has to do with removing Colorado River Water at Diamond Creek and then a pipeline over to Grand Canyon West. Want to make sure that we send the message to the Interior Department that we're not interested in having them pull groundwater from the truck stonewafers, and that's the reason for this resolution.
I second that.
So, with that, move to approve and adopt Board Resolution 2019-082.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item 39. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the reconsideration of item 42 from the July 1, 2019 Board of Supervisors Meeting, and set a public hearing on August 19, 2019 for discussion and possible action. We have one person signed up to speak on this, or two people, actually. I'll go ahead and let the both of you speak. Mr. Delmar Sanders. Okay, and just so you know, this motion will be to set this for a public hearing, and you'd be able to speak at that as well. But if you want to speak now before the public hearing, I'll allow you to do that.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name, excuse me, is Vicki Shillam. 4392 Donald Place in Fort Mojave. I'm the wife of Delmar Sanders. I guess what we don't understand is why we are... Why it's been asked for a reconsideration of what was passed on July 1. We agreed to no manufactured home on the property, which in turn qualifies for it to be an AR. An AR basically is pretty wide open, according to the Planning Commission. But however, you have to have special permits to do anything outside of the realm. So, I just don't understand, or we just don't understand, why it needs to be reviewed on the decision.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gold?
Ma'am, after we voted to rezone your property, I heard from about 80% of your neighbors that were opposed to what you had planned to do. And that's why I'll be making a motion for reconsideration. And I did call your husband and explain that to him. He was the first person that I called when I decided to reconsider it.
Okay, when you say 80% of our neighbors, we only sent out 30 letters. 10 of them don't even live there, and this 80%, are they within the 300 feet of the property?
The 800... Within the 300 feet, it's a seat of the pants, 80%. But it was overwhelming that the area is not supportive of what you intended to do.
Well...
Some are inside the 300 feet, some of them are outside of the 300 feet.
That's exactly what I thought, so I don't... Because they have somebody there that's door knocking and telling them what they want to tell them, but I cannot see for the life of me what we're doing wrong. Yes, we would like to build a garage before we build a residence, because I don't really want to leave our present residence as long as I'm in my cancer treatments. And they're making it impossible, almost, for us to even protect our toys, like everybody has in Arizona. But the other thing is, I just don't think that they want that piece of property developed. The prior owners had the same problem, because we called them. And now, I'm sorry that we ever bought it, to tell you the truth. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
It's a very long motion. The... I move that we approve the reconsideration of item 42 from the July 1, 2019 Board of Supervisors Meeting, and set a public hearing on August 19 of 2019 for discussion and possible action regarding Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-076, approval of a rezone of the assessor's parcel number 229-09-041, from an ROA SFR manufactured home prohibited limited animal privileges, to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow an accessory structure to be built prior to residence in the Fort Mojave vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Supervisor Johnson?
Sorry for interrupting you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Esplin, on a reconsideration, don't we just reconsider it, and then we have to take action?
Well, we would reconsider it, and then we are going to be taking later action at the public hearing. We have to reconsider it, which is what we're doing. We're reconsidering the item, and then we're setting the public hearing for August 19. So, we're not actually voting in favor of the item. Right now, we're just voting to reconsider it.
Correct, but we're reconsidering... Correct, but we're reconsidering it, so it would be a fresh item, then we would have to make a motion to do, to set the public hearing, correct?
We could do it that way if the Board wishes. I mean, I think it could be done both. I can't remember how we normally do these. We could do the reconsideration first and then set it for the August 19. We do have to have a public hearing on this for sure, though, I know that. So if you want to amend your motion to withdraw the public hearing?
I'll withdraw my previous motion. I move that the Board reconsider its action where on July 1, 2019 Board of Supervisors Meeting approved a rezone of assessor parcel 229-09-041 from an R-0/ASFR manufactured home prohibited limited animal privileges to a AR zone, agricultural residential zone, to allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to a residence in the Fort Mojave vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a new motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion does carry.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
I move that we set a public hearing on August 19 of 2019 for discussion and possible action regarding Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-076 of assessor's parcel number 229-09-041 from an A residential, or ROA, single-family residence manufactured home prohibited limited animal privileges zone to a AR agricultural residential zone to allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to a residence in the Fort Mojave vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, going on to item 40, the last item on the agenda. This will be a discussion of possible action, Ray approved Health Department occupancy on part of the Sheriff's Colorado City substation at 2096 South Highway 389 in Colorado City for the purpose of delivering nursing services to the greater Colorado City area, and further approve the budget for tenant improvements necessary to convert available space for complete and functional nursing use under all operating parameters for patient care at an estimated $10,175 source to fund, 405-10400-43960.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move to approve this item. It's consistent with the occupancy there at the campus in Colorado City, whereupon the sheriff's substation is located there along with the court system, so it would fit quite well. With that, I make a motion to approve.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hendricks, what is this emergency here?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, there was considerable issues that were identified on the building that the Health Department is currently leasing and the owner was not willing to continue our lease within that building. He identified additional, another structure, but it was over across the border in another state. That structure wouldn't be able to be certified by the state, which is necessary for the services that we're going to be providing up there. I know that our attorney's office was working diligently with the current owner of this facility to try to resolve the situation. What we ended up doing is finding it unresolvable and looking at what it would take to move our nursing program into that modular building that the county currently owns. And we got tremendous cooperation with the Sheriff's Department and everybody else who's occupying that structure, and they've come up with a good, solid plan. Time is of the essence because our lease runs out, I believe, in July 15.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. I understand Supervisor Johnson would like to add a little bit more to his legislative report, so Supervisor Johnson, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I missed the last meeting, but I received a thank you from Mr. Lotosky's willingness to accept the removed dirt from the channel project in Lake Havasu City. They'll be going in a different direction, but they appreciated so much the county stepping up to save them money. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. And second.